Great, and I'm sorry, I just now remembered I'm gonna go ahead and start recording this for the purpose of making our minutes a little more thorough and accurate. Next, Tiffany, or well, I say Erin, and then maybe you can introduce Tiffany.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Erin Taylor, District Conservationist for the Weaverville Service Center at R C S. And as of last week, Tiffany Perez actually joined us, and so Tiffany, you can feel free to introduce yourself and a little bit about your background.
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm a recent soil science graduate from Humboldt State University as of December, and now recently soil conservationist for the Weaverville office. And that is mostly my background in as far as education and studying. I also used to be the office support for the North Coast Environmental Center as far as any office experience and nonprofit work and environmental work with the community, which was with Larry Glass as the board director there. So happy to be a part of this, and recently did red card training last week, so getting familiar as well with fire and now a student of fire. So happy to be a part of this meeting.
Where did you do your red card training?
In Hayfork. That was, I think, with the Watershed Center.
You did, okay. I was gonna say, our crews were out there last week, too.
Exactly, yeah, that was with them.
Yes, Tiffany started off her, she launched her NRCS career with a bang and immediately went to red card training on her first day of work. So yeah, we're happy to have Tiffany to join the NRCS staff, and we look forward to working and collaborating with everybody as we move forward with all of our programs combined. Hopefully, we can do a lot of great conservation work.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you both. Jerry?
Hi, everybody. Jerry Cousins, a collaborative member, live in Weaverville.
All right. Bobby?
Hi, everybody. Welcome, Tiffany. Glad to have somebody your caliber. It sounds like you bring great energy, so thank you for that. And I'm Boarder Supervisor, District Three for Trinity County.
Jeremy? Are you with us, Jeremy?
Yep. Hello, Kelly. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. This is Jeremy Straight with the Redding B L M Field Office, just calling to see what's going on. Very little updates. We had Trinity, Cal Fire Trinity River crews working on our project at Little Browns. This was a 30-plus acre project, hand piling, roadside chipping. That managed to get completed just a day or two before all these lightning fires occurred. They were going to continue to work in Redding Indian Creek. However, I think that obviously the priority took them away to initial attack and ongoing fire suppression. So Redding Indian Creek hasn't been worked on in about two weeks, 10 days. But yeah, just to update, Little Browns project, 30-plus acres has been completed. They had just maybe a day to finish up that before all the fires happened, and they had two days to do that, so they completed it. End of report. Unless there's any questions.
Great. Thanks, Jeremy. Any questions for Jeremy?
On.
Okay. And we also have Ozzy Welsh.
Hi. I am a forest health coordinator at Trinity County R C E.
Great, you're a little bit, little bit.
I'm a forest health coordinator.
Your guys' audio is a little bit blocky.
Okay. We can speak slowly. Let us know if we become unintelligible. We'll call it in.
Okay. So any additions or changes to the agenda that anybody wants to bring? I did have one thing to report out. I guess I could start out with that. The last month, there was a discussion at the Fire Safety Council meeting that we wanted, there was interest in finding out about the ranking of the communal wildfire protection plan projects, how that ranking was going to be done. And a recent, just before I got on this call, we got a contact from Amelia Flights, who's spearheading that project for us here at the R C D, that she really wants to be a part of that conversation and wanted to work a little bit with Denise, who had actually has already begun that process, or a G I S manager. And so we wanted to basically delay that until, or postpone that till next month. And have that discussion. Hopefully, there'll be more people on the, on the call next month. Well, but we'll see. So are there any other additions or changes to the agenda, which is pretty thin? Okay.
This is Pat. So I just, as our Firewise Communities kind of coordinator, I just got an email today about a the Firewise program in California is having a virtual town hall meeting on September 11th. And I will send to maybe to Ozzy the link, and so she can get that out to people if they're interested in participating in that town hall meeting. I haven't had time really to look at it. It requires an R S V P, you know, I think, to be able to get the login information for the Zoom meeting. But it sounds like it could be pretty interesting. Wildfire preparedness and your insurance, which is, you know, what everybody really, it really comes down to oftentimes is, you know, home insurance. So I'll get that out to everybody after the meeting, or I'll get it to Ozzy to get out to everybody.
Great. Thanks, Pat.
Yeah, I can put that in the minutes. I'll send that from this meeting hours. Or I can also send an email or.
Okay, great. Hearing no other additions or changes to the agenda, I think we could jump straight into upcoming grant opportunities, and I was hoping that Oz could handle that.
Yeah, so these are great opportunities that I'm gonna hear about through the community association. Can you hear me?
It's still pretty blocky. Yeah, it's still pretty chunky.
Seems like it's pretty, yeah.
And when you're closer, it's a little better. Yeah.
Okay, is it better now?
Yes.
Much better.
All right. I will just not be able to use my video because I have my webcam right up next to my mouth. Okay, so these grant opportunities came to my attention through the California Association of R C Ds. So I'm definitely not an expert on any of them, but there's a little blurb in the agenda that, that I can like, you know, kind of briefly touch on. So some of them sound super interesting, especially this first one. It's the Council of Western Foresters Wildland Urban Interface Grant Program. And so they fund fuel reduction, but also like C W P P development and education and outreach projects that have to do with wildland urban interface, sort of like fire hazard reduction. And this, for this application, I looked into it a little bit, and you have to go through, for us, it'll be Cal Fire, since obviously we're in California. So the application actually has to be submitted through the state forestry agency. But they, but, you know, anybody can approach the state forestry agency and ask them to do that. So it's kind of an interesting opportunity. Yeah, so that one is due towards the end of September, September 25th. There's an insurance company that has like a worldwide grant program, so I'm not sure.
As you, as you go through these, could you, if you know, could you kind of tell us how much the grant opportunity is, how much money is gonna be around?
Yeah, I am not gonna know those amounts off the top of my head. Yeah, unfortunately, I.
So this is Pat. So on the W O E grants, just a kind of little history. So this is a really competitive project, program. The R C D has received one of them probably about 2008, and the Watershed Center received one somewhere in a couple of years after that. What, if we, if we're gonna approach that, it really requires interacting with our Cal Fire Fire Prevention people from Redding before we even put, you know, begin typing anything up, because they kind of rank at the, at the Cal Fire units, they rank their proposals before they send them on to the state office in Sacramento. And typically, California gets three grants approved in any one year. So it can be pretty competitive. But you know, you want to do your homework first with the Cal Fire local folks. What is their priority, you know, kind of in Trinity County, that kind of thing. But it's, it's, I think the times that the R C D got one to Watershed Center, the grants were in the $100, $150,000 kind of range.
Thanks for the background on that, Pat.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. And if anybody, like I said, these just came to my attention through mailing, so I don't have direct experience with any of them. So if anybody like that, if anybody like what Pat just said, has more insight into any of these, that's much appreciated. I'm mainly just throwing them out there for people to be able to look more into them if, if they're interested. So the next one that, that I was starting to talk about here is, and if also if anybody wants more information, I can, and wants me to look into it, I'm happy, like Jerry, if you wanted to know dollar amount on any of these in particular, I'm happy to look into it further and get back to you. I just don't know currently. So there's this worldwide insurance company that has like a worldwide ask for grant proposals. And probably the most relevant one for us, there's some like specific categories that they take that are like looking into arson investigations and stuff like that. But they do have education, training, and outreach funding for fire prevention. And those deadlines are coming up in September 30th and December 31st. And then there's the Joint Fire Science Program that I mentioned last time. And I looked into it, Pat, to answer your question from last time of if you have to have university affiliation to apply, and it doesn't look like you do. But you do, they are research grants, so these ones are, there's a couple of different categories again, but looking into research about the effectiveness of of fuel reduction efforts and also about sort of like the, where fire starts are, tend to be concentrated and the likelihood of fire starts. So there's a couple of different categories of research, but it is a research program, so gotta have a principal investigator who's, you know, qualified to produce research. And then there's the Landscape Scale Restoration Program, which I know has been used all over the West. And again, it's, it's landscape scale, like it says in the title, so so that'll be, those will be larger projects and something that we could talk about as a group. But I think this one as well, you have to go through your state, like through Cal Fire for us, for this one as well. So, and that one is due end of October, October 30th.
Great. Thank you, Ozzy. Any questions? Okay.
Kelly, would this be the place to give people update on the California Fire Safety Council grants? Because that's one of the hats I wear.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
So the, the volunteer reviewers are just wrapping up their reviews of the applications. And as, as always, there was, you know, like, there's, there's a couple of million dollars of grant money and something like $100 million worth of proposals that were submitted. So it'll be pretty competitive. And that committee will be kind of doing a Zoom kind of meeting to kind of finalize its recommendations to the Fire Safety Council Board next week. And the Fire Safety Council Board meets again on the 23rd, I think, of September, at which point they will vote on, you know, that's that recommendation from the committee. So by, I would think by the first of October, everybody should hear, you know, how they did in that, in the California Fire Safety Council Grant Program. And I wanted to mention something else. I haven't talked about it in, in a while. But actually, in the legislative session 2019, the California Fire Safety Council had a proposal to the legislature to fund countywide Fire Safety Council coordinators in every county that has a countywide council. And that was, that made it through the legislature and the governor's office and was approved. It got slowed down by just Cal Fire trying to figure out how they wanted to roll it out. So their, their answer to how to, how to do that was just sit on it for a while. And as it turns out, it looks like what they're going to do is they're going to turn that that program over to the California Fire Safety Council to roll out. And the goal, we had a board meeting yesterday, will be the California Fire Safety Council will contact each county board of supervisors in the next month or so to ask what organization is the countywide coordinator housed in. So in our case, that's always been the Fire Safety Council, the R C D. And then their hope is to actually get that money out and agreements signed by January or February. It's gonna be somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 per county coordinator. They're still kind of working on the numbers with Cal Fire. But I mean, that, that should, for the first time in, as long as I've been involved, give some real dollars, you know, for Fire Safety Council coordination in Trinity County. So Bobby, I'll get with you on, you know, at some point, we can chat about when that ask comes out from the California Fire Safety Council.
I think that'd be great, but I'm wondering if we should have a presentation to the full board, Pat. What do you think?
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little premature at the moment until we kind of know the dollar amounts and that sort of thing. But yeah, definitely, we would want to do that. And probably you as chair and maybe Richard Coons and I could chat about it, too.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
That's really good news. Okay. Moving right along. Outreach and news. Does anybody have anything that they have, that they'd like to announce to the group? Okay. Pat, just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm fairly new to this role. So what normally would have happened at this juncture?
In outreach and news, usually that's where we were in the recent months talking about the fire safety event that didn't happen because of COVID.
Oh, right.
You know, it, you know, you know, the National Wildfire Awareness Week, you know, in May. We should think about, you know, if there are, we did a kind of a concerted effort in the spring with articles in the, in the Trinity Journal after the wildfire preparedness and, you know, insert went out. We should think about, you know, in the middle of the fire season, you know, what, what should we be trying to get in the newspaper? You know, are there, are there particular little nuggets of information that we should be passing on, whether it be about, you know, being prepared with your go bags, or, you know, make sure you, you clean the leaves out of your gutters, you know, in case there are flying embers, that sort of thing. So there could be some things we could be doing, you know, maybe, you know, as, as in the middle of fire season, kind of information.
That would be a really good idea. We will get our heads together and sort of begin to think about what kind of information we could, we could be putting out.
You know, and it could, it could, it could just be even just getting some articles in. I mean, Jeremy talked about the work that B L M just completed. You know, you know, the R C D's got projects that they've been working on. We haven't really gotten any, any, any free press, you know, for some of that, the Watershed Centers projects, you know, things, you know, could be things like that, too, you know, that we could be working on. And I know the federal agencies, it's trickier for them to send out a press release because you got to go through their public information officers. But if they get the R C D or the Watershed Center, just the, the facts, you know, the R C D can always put together an article and get it submitted to the journal. Same with N R C S. If N R C S is trying to roll out enrollment or anything like that for any of their programs, you know, R C D can help do that, you know, Watershed Center, you know, without having to go through all the hoops of public information officers.
Yeah, that sounds great. We will get onto that. And I think that's a really good idea, especially now, because it's clearly gonna be on people's minds, so. Okay, well, short of anything else that anybody wants to add there, we'll move on to project updates. Jeremy, jump straight to the chase. So unless you have anything else you want to report out, Jeremy?
No, thank you, Kelly. Yeah, I think I jumped the gun, but that's the end of report.
That's all right. Well, thanks. Don't have Cal Fire, Cal Trans, I am Palm Fire Safety Council, so N R C S, Erin, Tiffany, you guys are up.
Alrighty. So I think this could have actually led into the outreach and news section, but considering I'm also learning the ropes and the flow of the agenda, I was just gonna save it for the N R C S report. So, yeah, so quick personnel updates. I, I'm still transitioning to Trinity County, but I am the District Conservationist now. That was, as of last week, was my effective date. And then also on the same effective date was Tiffany coming aboard, so she made her introductions already. So Tiffany and I are the two N R C S staff for the Weaverville Service Center, and then we still do have our partner forester and as well as our partner farm poll assistant in the office. And as far as project updates go, N R C S continues to close out our fiscal year 2020, and we're currently wrapping up our fiscal year 20 applications and transitioning to obligating them into contracts. In total, between R C P P Joint Chiefs and then our regular forest land equip fund pools, we have a total of eight contracts for the fiscal year 20. So leading into, I guess, more of the outreach news, so I just received information as of last week that our R C P P, our Regional Conservation Partnership Program, is actually accepting new applications from our local partners, which is due on November 4th of 2020. And so what I'll do is I'll, I could get that information sent out to be attached with the, the minutes for, for this month. And so it looks like there's been some changes, but I know that we're nearing towards the end of our North Coast Oak Woodland Project that, that ends at the fiscal year 2021. So now would be the time to start thinking for, for our partners to start thinking about if, 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 if we would like to pursue a new application for the next cycle. And so there's also some emphasis on watershed restoration, too. And then, of course, we can continue with like the forest land oak woodland health component as well. So I haven't had a chance to go through all the changes yet made from, with this cycles program, but I'm hoping that once I release all the information to everybody, we can just start gathering any questions folks may have so that I can help answer as necessary. Oh, Pat raises hand.
So have, have, have you all obligated all the money in the current?
We're working on it. We're, we're almost there. So we're, we're, we're down to the last two of the eight contracts as far as obligation goes.
Cool.
The R C P P program, I remember Heidi, in Trinity County at least, most of that, and you, I think you spoke to this a bit, but most of that was basically geared towards a few specific landowners in South County. And it was mostly oak woodland restoration. And are you anticipating that that's? I've only recently been hearing more about the R C P P program and how it relates to sort of other districts in the, in the region. And, and it seems like it's a pretty broad, like there's a lot of different things that it usually can, can fund as far as projects we're concerned, is there? But a lot of that, it seems, is driven by, by the, the local field offices. So is that, is that correct? Or is that something that, that you need a partner for?
Correct. So the way the R C P P program works is, so for example, the Oak Woodland Restor Conservation Project, we have the, there's collaborative partners that will go in together to apply for this pot of money, and it's usually for a whole farm bill cycle, or at least that's what it, it alludes to. And so UC Cooperative Extension over on the coast is considered the, the primary contract holders for R C P P. But they could have collaborative partners work within their inner circle because there's funding available for the technical assistant dollars to be able to support some of the staff time. And then, of course, private landowners can apply through R C P P to implement conservation projects. So there's subsets of funding within each R C P P fund pool, and it's just about how the funding gets dispersed. And then going back to the focus, so the R C P P is only eligible for certain Trinity County landowners that fall within a certain geographical boundary. And it, it just gets mapped out based off of where the, the priorities, concerns are. And I think that gets delineated from where the partners, when they apply. I could be wrong, but it's all embedded in this information that I'll send out to everybody. So there's, for the, the watershed related concerns, it looks like a majority of Northern Trinity County falls within that geographical boundary. So it looks like unfortunately, the Southern Trinity folks would not be eligible. But there's two separate subsets, it looks like, this time around. So there's the, let me pull it up. I have it here right now. It's called the Critical Conservation Area, so that would be the watershed. The watersheds is what has been identified already. But then there's another pot of money that each state can apply for separately, and it's all spelt out here. So just for the sake of time, that's just the Cliff Note version of what they're doing right now for the R C P P application period.
Thank you. Okay.
I had a question for, for Erin.
I had a question for, uh, for Erin. Um, it was just.
Chris.
If, if we have, uh, landowners who are interested in receiving funding from you guys to, they have, you know, projects or they want to get work done on their land and that, you know, if I've looked at it and feel like they're probably eligible, would it be best to send them direct to you or to talk to one of your, the people I know you contract with that I've worked with before?
Um, so the, the best, uh, option is, it's just whatever the landowner or the leasee wants, really. Because if there's already a working relationship that they have, say with the TCRCD or with the watershed center or so forth, then it could just, um, we could go in on it as a collaborative effort. Or the landowners can, um, of interest can just contact NRCS directly. So it's really up to the landowners, um, what they would like to do. And of course, um, because, uh, so in your particular case, if, um, I would just recommend that they, they could just give us a call or an email and then we could go from there. So it just really depends on what type of working relationship has already been established. Or if they're, or if you would like to establish, um, a work, a collaborative working relationships. I guess it's, um, a scenario, uh, case by case situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that help, Chris?
Yeah, I think so. I, I can send them, because there's just, there've been landowners that I've, I've spoken with and they've, what they've wanted done is like kind of outside of what we can, we can do just under our current grants and things. And so I just, you know, we still want to get them help and I, I know you guys are a, a great resource for a lot of them. And I was just wondering like kind of who, who to send them to and if, but I think, I think you've answered that, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Great, great. I think the next person that we have attendance for is, uh, Trinity County Board of Supervisors, Bobby.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I, I really don't have anything to report, but I wanted to add something on, um, the, the news side of it. When I had been going to different parts of my district and talking to people, preventative measures are really super important. But what questions also came up was, um, what to do in an evacuation? And also, um, there was a, how do I find out how I can volunteer? And just for your own information, the OES actually has some really good pamphlets put together for that. The Office of Emergency Services under Ed Presley. And there's actually a form you can pre-fill out because that's something important that during the time of disaster, that we have those body of people to call on and not during the exact, um, the disaster so they can get checked out. So I'm just throwing that out there because, um, going around the communities, that was, um, a, a huge thing. And then coordinating with Cal Fire for the individual districts, uh, areas. Say, I'll use my district poker bar, top of the grade, oh poker bar, and trying to have, um, uh, pullouts for the evacuees so that the vehicles, the emergency responders can get up in there. And, um, and I'm passing that along because that's, that's like a really important, um, community by community. And I can't see anybody other than the Fire Safe Council taking that mantle on now. But every community needs to know where to go and how to get out of the way of the emergency responders. So I don't know how you put that together, Pat, in an informational thing, but I just did want to throw it out there. It's, it's, I think, really vital, the evacuation and then what, what to do afterwards.
Great. Any response to that, Pat? Mute.
I can't hear you, Pat. I can't hear you.
Early on, um, in the first or second CWPP, we took a crack at evacuation routes and safe, safe zones and that sort of thing. And at the time, we got a little bit of, actually quite a bit of pushback. I mean, there was no real county OES office then, but pushback both from Cal Fire and, uh, the Volunteer Chiefs Association in the sense that they said that that's something, you know, that, you, you know, i- it is, is a little more complicated than just, than it sounds initially. And that they like to have the ability to, um, decide where people should, which direction people should be going and where they should be evacuating to, uh, at the time of the incident. Because it, it's so specific to that fire. But I think the pullout kind of thing, especially on all the one-way-in, one-way-out kind of, um, uh, communities, that, that's, that's pretty simple, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, it's simple, it's not cheap necessarily, but it's something that, you know, we could certainly begin to work on.
Yeah, Andy and, um, John Holland have been great. They work together really good. And, you know, I, I can't, I can't emphasize the importance of, um, those community, community, individual community evacuation plans. You know, I'd like to see somehow that there be more representation throughout the county on the Fire Safe Council from, you know, at least one person per district. But the districts are so different. I mean, I, you know, uh, Barker Valley is totally different than Topit Grade. And, you know, throughout the whole county, we have unique areas. And so, um, I don't know how you promote yourself to get more, uh, you know, the only person I know is Larry Winter that actively participates in the Fire Safe Council. We need more Larry Winters.
Yeah, and I would say when, when the Fire Safe Council shifted from evening meetings to afternoon meetings, that, um, s- seriously affected the ability of homeowners to participate in the meetings. And at one point, we talked about, you know, as a council, having at least once a quarter, having the meeting in the evening and even potentially, you know, moving it around the county. Because for people from, you know, Mad River or Ruth to come to an evening meeting, I mean, Larry Winter struggled to get here for evening meetings. You know, so, so that would be something we, I think, I think we ought to think about is, you know, um, you know, being a little bit more, or, or, I mean, somehow maybe, you know, somehow with the zooming, you know, people could be sitting anywhere. I mean, they could be sitting at their desk, you know, in their office, they could be sitting at home. But I don't think we've probably promoted, um, joining these meetings as Zoom for the general public.
Yeah, I, I just think that going forward, the fires aren't going away. We know that everything changed and we have to have more, more participation. And that's what I'm saying, the OES, uh, Ed's been great. I just, I can't, I can't say enough good about Ed. They have a flyer put together like how you can help in a disaster, but we need people to fill that out. So if you're going to be doing advertisements, um, in the future, there are people that maybe their thing is livestock and they have, you know, an area that they could bring if there, there's somebody on the other air, i- i- near enough that they can take in horses. I know this sounds really simplistic, but, um, our former animal control knew our community enough. And we knew, uh, like, uh, on, in Hayfork, we knew who could take goats or sheep or horses or even cattle. And Christina did that, but I think a lot of that, um, information, historical information is just kind of going away as people go away. And we need to have some kind of cheat sheet to go to that if we need to, um, tap into Wildwood Road or, sorry, I'm using so much of my, my district, but I'm doing it on purpose in, in a, in a sense because I've, we've done this in, in, in District Three. So I'm just trying to encourage you to do outreach, um, as well as information on how to be prepared. Use it as a time of recruiting because we just simply don't have enough people helping hands like, like at one time. And the historic knowledge of who was doing it, I, I don't think we have that either. So I'm not, I don't want to be preachy because you do everything you can already. And I don't want to come off that way, but I just, I just have this sense that there are people who want to help that don't know how they can help and then after the disaster, how they recover.
Yeah. Well, I mean, with additional funding for facilitation, that might make, I mean, may be easier for us to accomplish some of these goals and, and work towards that. And I, and I guess I would add, I was just on a, um, a Zoom meeting with some counter, with my, essentially my counterparts, um, uh, in a, at a group which is now becoming a district manager, sort of a support group for all the traumatized people that are going through everything all around the, the state. And we were talking about, um, you know, how RCDs in particular, um, are able to kind of assist their communities. And, and the discussion at, at one point turned to community wildfire protection planning. And just to sort of circle back a little bit, the thing that came up was that a lot of these CWPPs, you know, I think as Pat mentioned earlier, we had made an attempt to do that. I think we've had issues with the level of funding that we would need probably to do that sort of detailed work with, you know, individual VFDs throughout the county. But it apparently it's, you know, it, it hasn't been common in our CWPPs, but apparently that's, that is something that is fairly normal, um, in CWPPs other places. And so, um, that's something I can bring up with Amelia and, um, and talk about, you know, what that might take, um, at this point and, and, and at least in our current updating process. So unless Jill has anything to add on the board of supervisors side of things?
I do not. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, um, we'll move into Trinity County RCD. And I think, um, I think I would just probably continue what I was basically stating there. And as we stated at the top of the, um, top of the meeting, Amelia Flies is, uh, still, although she's taken a seasonal job, full-time seasonal job with the forest, she's also working part-time for us, um, and still, and focusing primarily on, on the CWPP update. And that's moving along, uh, well. Again, as I had mentioned, we were, there was a discussion about wanting to hear about the, the ranking for projects. And we've had a few questions from outside the, sort of outside the normal sphere of this group that had similar questions. So, um, she got pulled off in a fire, uh, actually. And so, um, we'll probably revisit this next, we'll get it on the agenda and try to revisit this next month. And we also had some, I, I was pretty sure that we had clarification on how we were going to be working on the, 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 revision to the wooie as well, but I think, I think we need to all just make sure that we're on this, on the same page so that when we are, are moving forward with both, um, well, the wooie and the, and the rankings, that they'll, you know, they'll be pretty much, uh, as people, you know, would expect and, and are sort of vetted by this group, so. Beyond that, uh, I would say I'd like to turn the RCD report over to Ozzy to talk a little bit about some of the re- uh, recent grants that we've submitted and, um, and what we've been hearing about those and anything else you might want to report out. So Oz?
Hi, yeah, um, so just again on that note, um, I was speaking with Denise Wesley, who's the, our GIS manager working on the ranking this morning. And, um, and although we're kind of postponing the larger conversation about that until Amelia's back, which will hopefully be next month's meeting, um, Denise did want me to, um, just kind of give a brief update that things are going, which Kelly's pretty much done. But she also wanted me to share her contact information with this group in case anybody had kind of pressing questions as she's beginning to develop, um, before the bigger conversation next month. If you do have questions that you want to directly address to Denise, who's doing most of the technical heavy lifting of actually creating the, the rankings, then she said she's super happy to talk to anybody from this group who has questions. So when I'm done talking here in a minute, I'll pop her, um, her cell phone number and her email address, which she asked me to provide, um, in the chat. And then I'll also include them in the minutes, uh, for this meeting, just in case anybody does feel like they have burning questions, so to speak, um, for her. Um, so that's the CWPP for now, basically a rain check. Um, uh, one of our biggest recent updates is that, um, thanks to funding from the Forest Service and, um, the hosting of the training through the Watershed Center, pretty much all of our, uh, field crew members on the forest health side are now red-carded, while then firefighters, so, um, that's very exciting. They attended the training down in Hayfork that Tiffany was mentioning. And so, yeah, thank you to the Forest Service and to the Watershed Center for that opportunity. And we hope that we can, um, continue to become more and more of a resource for prescribed fire, um, work in the county. Um, in terms of our implementation, there's been a lot going on. We've completed implementation in the Bear Creek area, which was about seventeen acres of defensible space and roadside, uh, thinning. We also completed, um, implementation in the Timber Ridge area to tie into, um, a BLM fuel break, a previous BLM fuel break. We have one of our crews down in, in South County, in the Ruth area, working with Nancy Curran on the Six Rivers National Forest. Um, and they will also be starting work under funding from PG&E soon. We're ready to start that implementation in the Mad River area as soon as we receive that funding from PG&E, which we have been awarded. Um, and then our, another recent thing we've been working on is a fee-for-service. It's about fifteen acres, um, of fuel reduction work on a property in Ridgeville. Um, and then finally for implementation, we've been, we've also done community chipping services on about five properties in the Weaverville area and, uh, some, uh, Little Browns Creek Road. Um, so that's what our crews have been up to. We also held, um, we held a field meeting for a project that we discussed at the last Fire Safe Council meeting. That's a collaboration between us and, um, the BLM. And, uh, that's a Little Browns Creek where it was originally going to be a sort of, uh, thinning and harvest project for stream flow enhancement in that area. But we, after that, that field meeting, we kind of talked with, um, some BLM folks and, and some other folks that attended that meeting. And, um, we determined that it will likely be more of a fuel reduction project and less of a harvest project, which will still meet the goals of enhancing stream flow in Little Browns Creek. Um, and so we intend to discuss that project further with the Weaverville Community Forest Steering Committee, since it is within the Weaverville Community Forest, um, and also discuss it further with, um, Rob Winkler from the BLM, since he, uh, that's in his wheelhouse, all the fuel reduction stuff on BLM land. Another development that, that has happened in the last month since we spoke is that Kelly and I gave a presentation to a national audience through the National Association of Conservation Districts about our pre-fire work, as they called it, so our fuel reduction and fire prevention, um, education and planning programs. So that was pretty exciting. We got a pretty good reception, I think, for that talk. And, um, yeah, and then also we're preparing for the arrival of a Grisley Corps member, which is an AmeriCorps program. And so that person will be working in the Forest Health Department with Chris. And so that person will be working in the Forest Health Department with Chris and I, starting off with a stand assessment on the Weaverville Community Forest on the BLM side. So it'll, we'll have Kathleen is her name, and she will be with us for 11 months, starting mid-September. So that's very exciting. And I'm sure she will be involved in all of these things. So I think that's it for us. Anybody, if anybody has any questions, go for it.
Okay. Not hearing any questions. I think we've pretty much got through everybody that's on the call. And so unless Larry, unless you have anything you'd like to report out, or Jerry?
I'm good. Thank you.
Me too. It was just a good bit of information. Thanks, everybody.
Great. Very good. So our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 24th. Same bat time, same bat channel, 1:00 PM. And it looks like, you know, no end in sight for these Zoom meetings and the, and the era of the Brady Bunch. Visualizations.
So I have a, a quick, I guess, housekeeping question. So is it safe to assume that these meetings occur every fourth Thursday at 1:00 PM?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, because I just set up my reoccurring calendar that way. And then if I needed to submit the RCPP information for the purpose of the minutes, is, Azzy, are you in charge of the minutes?
You can send them to Oz. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Will do.
I would just tell you, Aaron, though, for November, you bring the pumpkin pie.
Oh, okay. Will do. Maybe it'll have to be a virtual recipe so we could all cook the same pie. And then we'll test out how it all turned out.
Our screens are going to need to turn into like Scratch and Snips or something.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Smell-a-vision. All right. So unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I think we're, we're all wrapped up. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.